Don't forget your mic, Dave. So that's deals with public participation. Agenda item 2.2 apologies. So what are the apologies for this meeting?
Apologies for this meeting are Garfield, Kennedy and Edric due to personal commitments. And, oh yeah, sorry, Garfield was work related. And I'm just checking, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Yep, that's everyone else present.
Okay, so are we happy to accept the apologies from Garfield and Edric? Thank you. Seconded for that. Jane, all those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. Apology is accepted. Okay, item 2.3 declarations of interest. Does anyone have any declarations of interest in relation to Martin?
That seemed to be listed as an apology.
Apologies, Martin. That was my error entirely. It must have been a hot day.
The blacks apologise for your apologies.
That's right, because I am giving apologies to the September meeting.
Yes, that might have been what I confused it with.
I'm here now.
But Martin, so any declarations of interest in relation to business? Not, thank you very much. Indeed. So I'm now going to, oh, we're done. 2.4, so minutes. In fact, we've got three lots of minutes to approve here. Take them in date order. There's the extraordinary full council meeting of the 25th of March. Have people had an opportunity to read those? And if so, is anybody happy to propose? Well, let's do them, we'll do them on, no, we'll do them individually in case there's any, anybody happy to propose those as an accurate record of that meeting? Matt, anybody wants a second? Nobody wants a second. Janet, second. All those in favour? Thank you very much. So moving on to the full council of the 22nd of April. Again, are there any issues relating to those minutes? Or is somebody happy to propose we accept those? You're proposing? Thanks, James. Seconded by Janet. All those in favour? Thank you. And then finally, the annual meeting of the council, which was held on the 6th of May. Again, if you've had, I will have an opportunity to read it. Are there any issues? Not matters arising, but any issues of accuracy? No. So James, you're proposing? Seconded please. Jane, all those in favour? Thank you. Those are all.
I'll sign at the end.
I'll sign at the end. Just don't let me go before I do, because I know I've got a habit of doing disappearing tricks. Okay, so we're going to now jump to agenda item 2.9, Members' Motion, One-Off Emergency Funding to Prevent Closure of the Arts Bank.
Pardon? I've missed the report for information to full council, I'm sorry. Right.
He proposed to move the.
Oh, sorry. Right, okay, apologies, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So this is obviously my report. Abby, is there anything you would like to say ahead of Members' Questions and Discussion? If there is, do you want to come speak into a microphone?
We can have voice, actually. My name's Abby and I have been involved with the Art Bank since the very beginning and have recently taken over as one of the directors. I come to you after 14 days straight deep cleaning and repainting the building. Thank you, Dave.
Anything else she wanted to say in relation to it? Okay. So you've got the report for you, which was authored by my good self. You know, I don't propose to go because there's quite a lot of information in there, but I'm obviously very happy to take questions. But essentially, at the heart of this is that we're asking to provide a one-off grant, essentially to prevent closure. The situation is such at the moment that without some one-off emergency financial assistance, the Art Bank will close. And you know what it's like with community provision. Once something goes, it's very, very difficult, if not impossible, to ever get it back again. So that's, that's the context. So I'm happy to take questions before we go to any voting on recommendations. Matt then Tom.
I don't have a question. I just want to put my feelings out there. I think the Art Bank's one of the best things about Shepton Mallett. I think if we lost it on the high street, it would be, we'd be famous for letting it fail. And when I say we, it's not our responsibility, but people associate, whether you like it or not, they associate the economic health of a town or the cultural health of a town with the current cohort of local government, whether you like it or not. And I'd be sort of ashamed, to be honest, if, if the Art Bank sort of went under on our watch, if you like. So I would hate to see that happen. I do have concerns about setting a precedent because our job is not as sort of last banker, of banker of last resort. So yeah, I do have concerns about that. But at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's a jewel in our crown and I think it would be tragic to see it close. So I'd like to see. And you know, one thing we are, we have is money. We've, we've done such a good job in previous years of ring fencing money in case of devolution challenges and Somerset Council, which are coming our way very slowly, but they are. But you know, we've got money in the bank and to see the Art Bank fail while we're sitting on some quite healthy funds in our bank accounts would be, would be tragic. So I would like to see us support this as a council. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, then Jane and Kai, and then Janet.
So my question relates to the Spark Somerset Funding and the likelihood that that is going to materialise in the timeframe we need it to.
Spark aren't providing funding. It's Somerset Community Foundation that will be, will be the funder. Abby, are you able to sort of say more about their mission? Are they, is it likely that, as at the meeting, that they would be able to assist?
So as, as it stands at the moment with Somerset Community Foundation, we're applying to lots of their little pots of money. And they have said that they're going to be in touch basically in September about the Warm Spaces Grant, which we were given last year, which is from October to March. We're also going for awards for all, which I did apply to, but I hadn't quite, we hadn't quite done the changeover of directors in time and Arts Council project grant funding. And once we've got, we've applied to Shepton, to Somerset Community Foundation for money for a consultation, just to make sure that we're really listening to the needs of the town and responding and really providing that social need. And we are also then off the back of that going to do a business plan because there isn't one and we need one. And then we will apply for three to five-year funding.
So the Somerset Community Foundation were at the meeting I attended, which is referred to in the report. And because of the way, you know, they are a funder, so and in most cases they're managing funds on behalf of others. So it's very, so it's not easy for them to just give a decision in a meeting like we had. But the inference was very much with some clever use of some of the funds that are available, that they, they'll essentially, as I've referred to here, would then provide some additional funding, which would be follow-on from our funding, that would, that would increase that sort of space-time that they need to do, you know, to do the necessary work. So whilst I, you know, I can't hear, actually speak on behalf of SFC, I've written this report honestly based on the conversations and my understanding of what is most likely to happen. And Spark are essentially doing the work with the directors and stuff around business plan, you know, whether they've got the right governance and all those sorts of issues. So it's not a funding support, it's, it's supporting kind. Okay, Tom.
I'm getting a sense that you have confidence in this process and it's enough and that's plenty enough for me. So thank you, Dave.
That's very kind of you. I mean, as you know, I did this stuff for my job for many, many, many years, so I wouldn't come here and say otherwise if, if I don't think it was the case. So, yeah.
The Art Bank is an institution that we really should support because not so much for some of the events it puts on, but the fact that it supports a wide range of people within our community that don't get support elsewhere. And long may that continue. I'm also reassured by what Abby has said and what you've said, Dave, in terms of the governance issues, because I've always had concerns about the governance of the Art Bank, how the funding was going to be looked at longer term and how, how that's portrayed. Because I think unless you have good governance and good financial structures and directors who know what they're doing, it was very much at risk and would always be at risk. And we can't just keep bailing them out. So therefore, having good governance looked at and work carrying on to support those people in our society who need it, for me, is really, really key. And I would hate to lose it on our watch too. I think it's absolutely vital to keep it. It's unique.
Kai, you're okay. You've had these. Janet.
Are we on? Yeah, we go. I don't disagree with any of the points raised, but I wanted to approach this really from a a head rather than a heart approach, because I think it's probably quite an emotive sort of subject, because obviously it's, people are quite passionate about the, the Art Bank and rightly so as, as part of the community. I guess a couple of questions for me actually was, how was this figure arrived at? In terms of the due diligence that might have been done at looking at the accounts, obviously it said, you know, it's going to last for another four months. I think my questions really are, do we have any assurances that the money's not going to be sucked up and used up in month one? And what happens in month two, three and four? So that's sort of one question about the figure arrived at. I wonder whether, subject to what the, the council view in terms of the recommendation, whether we could also have intermittent updates about how the funding will actually be used. So after month one, this is how much we've used, this is what we've done, month two and so on and so forth. Because I agree with Matt, there's a precedent being set here. So I think we need to set some particular parameters and that's not to be difficult. It's just about due diligence and good governance. And under normal circumstances, and small businesses obviously are not subject to audits, but obviously larger organisations are. And of course, there would be always that assessment by auditors about a going concern. So I just would be interested to know what assessment has been done either by a professional or another party that might look at the long, ongoing elements of the Art Bank. Again, you know, not, not in relation to, you know, it's not going to happen. But again, you know, we're making a decision here, using public funds. So again, it's just those reassurances. Is that okay in terms of those? Feel free to respond to those if you like.
Thank you, Janet. I prefer to Abby.
So in November last year, we employed downside accountants and they've been working with Louise from Spark to look at where we can save money, where we're losing money and, yeah, what's coming in, what's going out. And so they came to the figure of the 15,000 and alongside, so, and we're very, very happy because they keep all of, keep all the accounts together to do, to report back on what is being spent on. We do have really high outgoings. Our rent is 1,250 a month. And so it's, we have, we have downsized our programming and we're moving much more into the, much more back to the roots of the community, the community workshops. How can we highlight the, the eco side of art? And so that, so we're moving back to that because I think there was a little experiment with it being a live music venue, which I think probably lost some money. It was before my time. That is going to still be a little small element, but like, we're working with the Amulet as well to see how we can work together on that. Thank you.
Martin? Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Obviously, the Art Bank, part of what the Art Bank does is as a cafe at a bar in competition with other cafes and bars, also in the marketplace. Is there going to be an issue with those other businesses about how they view this and what's, are we separating that bit from our consideration? So that the bit we're subsidising is the bit that's not that and all that sort of thing. Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, my understanding is we are essentially trying to ensure that they, they can cover their core costs just to keep, in order to keep the doors open, the whole business about, if you like, the almost the commercial side, you know, in terms of cafe. You know, that clearly needs to be looked at as, as part of the overall package in terms of the business plan. Because in theory, that ought to be a bit of the business that's putting money into the social activities, you know, a bit like the way a social enterprise would operate. So, yeah. So this is very much to, I mean, so for example, it's not really mentioned, you know, and names aren't mentioned specifically, but there is currently a paid employee. If I remember right, was it 20 hours or unpaid? No, what was it?
So.
Don't mention names.
I'm not going to mention names, but last year before the new directors came on board, there was somebody that was working five hours and, sorry, working 25 hours and getting paid for five. And we've managed to, with grants, we've, we've been successful with the grants that we've applied for so far. We have managed to pay them for their hours now, but we just need to keep it up.
So those are the kind of bits that need, you know, really need to be sustainable in the long term, because really they should be invest, you know, be able to invest money into the, into the other activities. Janet then Robert.
So as, as you're talking, I'm getting other questions coming up. I was interested to know actually if there's been any progress made on the rent holiday. I know the paper suggests that there's going to be conversations. I don't know whether they've started at all.
I'll, I'll answer that, Janet.
That's great. And my second question while I'm on the mic, if that makes sense. And it's just come off of what you said about members of staff. I think the other thing, of course, is noting risks. If people are working longer hours and they're being paid for, there's risks now about basically they're not going to be paid minimum wage, which of course is a legal requirement. So straight away, there's major risks of not being able to pay people what they're due. So that's a real red flag, isn't it? So.
That was happening before I was brought on board. And as soon as I came on board, I got the money to pay them.
I think that's an important thing to remember, though. There was a, you know, Art Bank part, you know, version one, that's the bit that struggled, you know, it, you know. And it's not a criticism of anybody personally, but clearly, you know, the building blocks were not put in place to have a sustainably run organisation. That's now changing. And this is the bit that's, if you like, is the bridging bit. So what we're, we're looking at this evening is this sort of bridging that buys the time in order to bring.
And the rent question you were going to answer.
And in terms of the rent holiday. Yeah, we, Gavin and I have discussed it because Gavin has a sort of a relationship with the landlord, one that would, I think, enable a conversation. But we made a decision in conversation that we'd wait until tonight, because actually if we decide towards some funding, that might be quite helpful in terms of any conversations with the landlord about rent holidays.
This is where I become a very unpopular human being, but I have serious concerns. The first one, and although I'm genuinely not blaming you for this, this was from the previous thing, is I checked up on the FCA, which you're governed by. There is no indication of any tax, there wasn't any sort of paperwork for two years. That is the Financial Conduct Authority. They are the people that are meant to be looking after your company. They have no information. Now, that, that to me makes a serious issue with, with us providing funding to, to people. Again, not blaming you, this was a previous entity that did it, but to me, that, that does mean that that makes it very difficult for us because the, the idea of them being present in, in following the correct procedures and we're handing money to that. Secondly, as, as is pointed out, I, I do worry about the idea of providing what is basically just generating operating costs to a company would open it up and along with the idea of it's a cafe. And thirdly, my big one is the fact that it will leave us in the act budget with 70, is it 79 pounds? Now, if we take the money off the devolution budget, as Matt has suggested, we're taking money that has already been allocated to a different object. And as Matt pointed out, that could be something that we get hit again and again by, and that money is there for that reason. So it could be in a year's time, we turn around and say, well, actually, we can't keep the toilets open because we need 15 grand. But we haven't got that 15 grand anymore because we've given it to the Art Bank. If we take out the act budget, when we get, maybe make the sunshine, turning around to say, I've got this really great idea. I really want to run it in December. I'm sorry, we can't do it because we've given all the money to one, one group of people. So I am really concerned that, one, we're putting all our eggs in the basket, two, the, the financial paperwork is just not there. And three, I'm very concerned about the fact that this is an ongoing concern. It is a, you know, there is a financial loss there. And, and as much as everybody is saying, well, this is great, things are going to be done and that is amazing. And I'm, you know, I'm not saying you can't do it. There's no evidence it's going to happen. There's, there's that, that, you can, you can, I mean, you're looking at it that way, Dave, but you're saying, you're saying I've had conversations with people, but there's no indication that that uptick's happening.
I'm not, I'm mainly putting it past you that there's no evidence, but the point is, you know, we're at the beginning stages of a transformation. Of course, there isn't the evidence to show it at, at the moment. So I just want to be a bit careful, you know, because it get, I, I'm with you, you know. We know we turned down a grant, didn't we, last year, because they probably stole the paper. And I just spoke to her about that. And she, and they're, they're totally aware of the major deficiencies, but that was then. You know, we're talking about a new regime, sorry. Do you want to come back on some of the?
Yeah, just about the FCA. Because we bought accountants in when we came in, all of that. I would just like to come back to you on that with our accountants after this meeting on email tomorrow maybe, because I know that that's what the accountants have been working on. And so I would like to resolve that with you and then for that to be distributed among everybody else.
Oh, sure. I'm not, I'm not saying you haven't got the things. What I'm saying is, because I know it sounds like a neat point, but if it's not given to them, they can turn around, as I'm sure we all know, that they are a statutory regulatory body. If you haven't provided the paperwork to them, they could turn around tomorrow and say, we're closing you down. So, you know, obviously that's something that needs to be sorted out ASAP. They need to have that information. And if we're giving you 15,000 pounds at the moment and you're not, again, not through any fault of your own, I'm not placing this on you. This is from the previous thing. But if you don't have that paperwork with them and we hand you that money and someone turns around to us and says, well, why did you give money to a company that's not done it? And they don't know your situation. They don't know the fact that lots of work has been done. They could do that tomorrow. They could just decide that.
And so is it possible for, because I know that our accountants are working on it, is it possible for, for a terms and conditions type offer? Because I know that I, I am getting emails about the, the FCA all the time. I know that that's, that, that piece of work is underway. And so, and I completely understand what you're saying and agree with you. So, yeah, if we, I would be really happy to resolve that with everyone.
Okay, did you want to come back quickly?
I was going to say that'd make me a lot, if we had some sort of proviso that it was, that the paperwork was going through that thing and we are, we are aware of that, that would make me a lot happier about the situation, yeah.
I would have to come with some conditions without any shadow, without any shadow of a doubt. And just to, also just, just so you're aware, one of the things that Spark are looking at is whether or not the governance is even right. And it may be that it, it, the, the current organisation essentially dissolves and they possibly become a charitably incorporated organisation, because the current structure actually shuts off possible funding avenues to them. So, so that's all, right. So I've got Gavin, then Abby, James, John. Go on, blimey, right, Gavin.
So, so I think ultimately, we've all sat in these meetings before and we have had concerns about Art Bank number one. This, this is Art Bank number two. This is a new start. We are being assured as best we can that the structures are going to be in place if they're not already. As, as, as other members have said, we cannot let this business fail. This is, this is the heart and soul of our town. And yes, maybe we are thinking it, about it with our hearts, but we also have to think about the town and we have huge problems. We are being asked for a relatively small amount of money in the greater shape of things. If it gives them four-month freezing space and if, if, if this money is forthcoming, it will give others the confidence as well to probably invest other organisations. I, I think, you know, as much as giving handouts is not good, as we can't bail out failing businesses and just delay the inevitable. For me, this is very different. This is, this is an organisation that's going through a huge metamorphosis and I think we should all encourage that by supporting it.
Thanks. I feel really conflicted actually for all of the reasons that have been mentioned so far. And I think Rob raises some very valid points. I really would want it to change to a CIC or a CIO. I know you've got it, that that is the plan, but I think that is absolutely essential. But I think my biggest question is, what is your relationship going to be with that? I mean, I know Dan's here, obviously. What is your relationship going to be with the Amulet moving forward? Because they do have a very similar ethos and pull. So I just wondered what that.
Actually, I've had quite a few meetings with Ollie from the Amulet and obviously we've got a good relationship with Martin. And we, we actually are quite different because I think the Art Bank are really going back to those roots of that social enterprise, bringing people together out of isolation, skill building. Whereas what I believe from my conversations with the Amulet is that's more of a commercial venue. I've got an arts management background. So it's more of a commercial venue that's booking big-name acts, big cinema. And, and we are, we're grassroots. We're, we're really looking at how can we get, how can we keep the members of the community that love the Art Bank? And how can we reach the people that don't access the Art Bank better?
Thanks. That's really great. What I would say as well is to keep those conversations going with the Amulet because you're, you're going to be two big things.
Just to say at the meeting, that was very, one of the questions that, very much that I raised about the relationship. And, you know, that what we didn't want is, you know, unhelpful and unhealthy competition or duplication. But I think it's very much about a collaborative and complementary approach. Janet, which one? James, Janet and John, that takes me back to school. And then Matt.
Thank you, Chair. Just very quickly, I am slightly conflicted, but I'm definitely going to go with supporting it. I do think we need to stop using the phrase, you know, it's, it's too important to fail. It's a, it's a financial institution. It will fail if it's not run properly and we're not able to support it if it's not run properly. But this buys the time for the bridging. Brilliant, Abby, what you're doing, fantastic new regime. We want to reward that. But I think let's stop saying that it's too important to fail, because it is important, but it will fail if it's not, not run properly. But, but you're doing the right things by the sounds of it.
Janet.
Thank you. I was actually sort of trying to draw it to a close actually in terms of the recommendation. So I'm not going to make the recommendation yet. I'm just going to make a suggestion for a recommendation, because there may be other people who want to take it forward. I was actually going to suggest that with the recommendation that's up there, we actually put in a little extra bit, which is that it's going to be payable in two instalments. So first payment upfront and then after the initial report, like a bi, a bi-monthly report to like a report, say, how, how are those two months gone before you get your second instalment, which will cover the last two months? That's when you, that covers off the governance issues for me in terms of my points earlier. So it's not a sort of like a blanket, here's 15 grand and then in a week's time, we say, oh, it's all, it's all gone wrong anyway. I mean, I'm not saying it will, but there's always that risk. And I think that limits our risk and the liability element of having it payable in two monthly instalments. So I have written some words of potential proposal. I just wanted to put that in for potential thought and obviously would need to list the conditions, so.
John.
Thanks, Chair. Despite my standing on the act committee, I, I too am conflicted. Obviously, what Matt said right at the start that feels like we're giving a handout to a failing business. And I appreciate Abby's here trying to turn that around. I, yes, 15,000 pounds is not necessarily an awful lot of money, but it is an awful lot of money. And there are lots of people who might not interact with the Art Bank and might want to challenge us to say, what do I get out of it? You know, I've been to the Art Bank lots of times, you know, maybe not, you know, maybe even the early days when there was. What, what's, what's that, what's that point of no return? What, what's, what's that, what's that point of no return? Is, is it four months? So, so after, after four months and fifteen thousand pounds is gone, for example, in whatever form it's, it's paid. And if, if no grant is forthcoming, is, is that, is four months the point of no return?
I think that we would be, um, keeping an eye on that. We wouldn't just let the four months go and then, um, but I am, I'm the person that's applying for the funding, so, um, and I'm applying for everything and I've got support applying for it as well.
And, and I'm saying, I'm saying that's great.
So I think it wouldn't get to that point because we would, um, we would hold a fundraiser or we would, we wouldn't let it get through those four months.
Yeah.
Um, and then say, ah, here we are again. Because we're keeping an eye on it, we, we're having meetings with our accountants all the time and Spark are actually working with them at the moment to get them to break down the financials a little bit more for us. So we really, really understand.
Yeah.
And do a consultation on everything with Spark to make sure that we're really tightening up our expenditure, um, and.
Sorry, Abby, can I, where's the money coming in, coming from?
So we have money coming in, uh, from the bar, from events.
Yeah.
And we have money coming in from, we've just, um, we, we are now putting in core costs on every single bid that goes in, which wasn't happening previously. Um, and we, um, are asking people that use the venue to, um, put, when they're putting in their funding bids to in our core costs as well. So we're trying to, so everyone that's involved with the Art Bank or using the Art Bank is putting a bit of money in so that, so that we're building that core each month.
Yeah.
Rather than what was happening, which was, um, free use of the venue.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, just to say, from all my experience, forty years' experience working with volunteer organisations, it's not uncommon, um, particularly in applying for project funding, they forget to full cost recovery. And that's why they get into trouble because they don't factor in, you know, the, the, the back office, the full, you know, costs of even delivering a project. So it, it's issues like that that are going to get properly tackled in terms of a future business plan.
And, and obviously, and, and that's, that's great to hear, Chair, but again, as has been expressed by a number of colleagues here, that I suppose there's still nervousness, you know, around, you know.
And I would fully, I would back that. And there is risk, of course there's risk. But I think when you start to balance risk in terms of, you know, the financial risks against the sort of other sort of social economic risks, you, you, for, for me, it's a low risk because we're not committing to anything beyond this. I mean, we'd only look at something beyond this if by next financial year, you've got an organisation that, that can, that can, you know.
Could I, could I suggest then possibly to add to Janet's recommendation? I think it says on here about a press release is not required for this decision. If, if we as a body are, you know, backing Abby and her team to a, not, again, fifteen thousand pounds for me, if it left my bank account, I would be, where's that gone? A tenner for me, you know, and they're, I'm, I'm sure that, no, no. If I lost the tenner, I'd be, where's that? There are others in our community who, who don't have that authority. So if we are, if we are backing this motion, if we are putting our money to, to save something from our hearts and our heads, we should be having, there should be a press release saying, this is what we're doing, not like, oh, we've just made this decision. I think there should be something that says, we, we, we back the Art Bank.
We cross, cross that bridge and we sort of come, it's more important that we get. Well, it's got, I'm not, it's got, I'm not sure. It's probably about forty minutes on this one item already.
Um, I want to start by saying as well that I feel a little bit conflicted about it, but I think, no, I, I will then, uh, qualify this. Uh, we have made bigger grants before with far, far less control. I mentioned the health centre, the, what do you call it, the, um, the school centre thing, what was that called? Leisure centre, the leisure centre. We gave twenty grand to the leisure centre, we got no follow-up from it and, uh, it closed and the money was gone. So I think due diligence, if we want to talk about that, has been, uh, followed far better here. Is being followed and we have an open situation of communication here. So in that respect, I feel still conflicted, but much safer, uh, from the heart. I would also say I support the, uh, Art Bank, but it's, you know, we got to think of all the community, but I think we do think of all the community because we do lots of other things. You know, we go to Collat Park Day and we do all sorts of other things that cover other aspects of our community. This is one of them, might not be there for everyone and some people might say, oh, why are you supporting the Art Bank or not my dog club or whatever? But I would support it.
Thank you, Kai. Yeah, I mean, just a person, and again, for myself, I don't see it as a bailing out. I see this as very much the enabling role of a council, you know, in terms of trying to protect an asset. Uh, and I'm not pretending that it might not yet not work, but, but for me, it's, it's a low, it's a low risk anyway. I, I want to, Janet, do you want to sort of put, no, I, I get it.
Okay. Yeah, so I would like to make an alternative recommendation. And Claire might be able to just correct me if I get this wrong, that the council agrees a one-off emergency payment of fifteen thousand pounds payable in two equal instalments to cover the four months shortfall running costs of the Art Bank, uh, covering July to September twenty twenty five inclusive, the conditions of which will be delegated to the town clerk. Can we do that rather than talking about the conditions tonight? Um, who will also overall discharge the relevant duties, yada, yada, yada. Uh, yeah, sorry, that, that was in the conditions. So rather than have it listed, because I think there are quite a few conditions we probably want listed. So one of them would be satisfactory report, evidence of good governance structures in place, um, you've seen the report from, um, the, the accountants downside, that they for me might be the conditions, but I don't want to spend twenty, next twenty. Sorry, it went off, so unless I was turned off. Um, and maybe Claire can, um, just check if my, uh, proposal was recommendation, whatever it's called, was okay.
But, uh, from a governance perspective, that's absolutely fine. The only thing I would say is originally in this paper, I think the intention was to sup, supply three months, hence July, Octo, uh, July, August, September. However, now that September changes to October, but if you're acknowledging the four months that is mentioned everywhere else in the paper, then it follows to October.
Schoolboy error. That's the recommendation, uh, before you, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Um, so Janet's the proposer. Can I, is there a second?
You can second, it's your motion.
I'll second it as it's my motion, or Gavin could, because he was gonna, yeah. Um, actually, I'll propose because I'm the proposer to the, so I'm going to propose, Gavin, you have to second.
Yeah, now you've got Rob to speak to it.
Sorry, can I ask for a point of clarity? Where's this money coming from?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's our options out there. Can you just, I'd ask you just to clarify.
Um, so as it's unbudgeted funds, I've put in the papers, you'll see in the grey boxes of my comments, hopefully that made it clearer to distinguish between the two. Um, if you're proceeding with this one and you use the funds remaining in the Grants and SLA Community Budget, which is the logical place for it, it does leave you with only, hang on just a second, nine hundred and twenty-one pounds for the autumn round. Unless this council also resolves to overspend that budget line by a defined amount, which you are entitled to do as full council, any overspend of a budget line will come from general reserves. Just as a point of note, general reserves is there for unexpected unplanned, uh, expenditure that cannot be held to the next financial year. So just be aware of that because there are a few items, that we've already spent from general reserves and there's more items on this agenda that might spend from general reserves. So be aware that you're early in the financial year and you're already digging into that pot.
Okay, so maybe therefore to answer some of your, your concerns, Rob, is that actually, ACTs won't necessarily lose out because we could legitimately overspend to meet the demands that we get through in October. Okay, so I'm proposing with Janet's amendment, you're seconding because you're on the papers, I'm seconding the motion, yeah. So all those in.
Sorry, clarity, oh, so that sorry, includes spending from that Grants and SLA. And are you going to set a limit of how much you're prepared for that to overspend? Because only full council can make that decision, the committee cannot.
Uh, can we take this money from general reserve then? As part of that recommendation?
You, you top up whatever we, whatever we need to, to enable us to award the grants in act from general reserves.
But if this, if this is an emergency, an unforeseen thing, then surely general reserves could pop and take it from, and leave the grant thing alone.
Further amendment then would be, would be, would be to take the money from general reserves. So that's also part of the, is everybody clear on that? Yeah. Okay, so I think we've got there, so.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to double check the point about the communication, um, whether it should be a press release. Does that have to come in the recommendation or do we discuss this after the proposal has been proposed and accepted?
Unless the council decides, determines and directs on the press release, we would do that as part of our delegated authority in the office. So if you're willing to leave us to do that in-house, we can.
Just, I think we do it quite sensitively and diplomatically, yeah. Because my other thought would be, wait till the end, wait, wait till it's all a thriving centre and then we'll do a press release to sort of say how we helped. Anyway, yeah. Let's move to vote then. So if we're all clear on the proposal, those in favour, please show your hands.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Anyone against? Just Rob, any abstentions? Sorry, and Abby's abstaining. So that's.
Yep, that's everyone accounted for.
So that's passed.
Yes, motion carried.
Motion passed.
So just for Abby's benefit, we do the payment run on the twenty-fifth of each calendar month. So it will make it into the July payment month.
Thank you, Abby. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That was long, that really helped debate, um, much appreciated. So now, um, agenda two, agenda item two point ten, member motion, Town Centre Public Relations. This is Tom's report and I know Dan's here, I think, to speak, also speak to it. Do you want to come and speak to a microphone?
Well, while Dan's setting up, just set the scene on this one. This is an item that came to TDMP and landed on my desk to try and hustle through. Um, so I've since been in communication with Dan to try and work out the, what the options are. Um, it's since become clear that we don't have significant marketing expertise, so we're, it's, we need to, we need to discuss, we need to plan further and that may require a budget. Um, appreciate that is not on the paperwork for this evening, but it's fast moving, so I appreciate your flexibility on this. Thank you, everybody. Dan, over to you.
Can you hear me? Yep, great. Uh, do I need to introduce myself or is everyone?
Hi, Robert. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm Dan Simon. I run interim spaces. Uh, we have three projects in Shepton Mallett. Uh, ten marketplace from which we run a retail incubator and studio space for affordable classes of music and the arts. Uh, we run Commercial Road Studios in, uh, the former registry offices on Commercial Road, leased to us by Somerset Council for five years. It's now an artist studio with fifteen local makers and creators and doing really well, I'm glad to report. And we have just started up a new project at thirty-seven Town Street, uh, in partnership with Shepton Mallett Town Council. Um, it is a gift shop featuring the works of forty different traders from around the town. So I, I, I'm here tonight because I think we, I think we need an intervention in the, uh, in regards to the welfare of businesses in the, in the, in the town centre. Um, I know all of you are aware that it's a struggle for businesses at the moment on our high street and in the town centre, and it's certainly a struggle for businesses on the high street and, and in town centres all over the United Kingdom. Um, I think that there's a few things that make our struggle fairly unique and a little bit different and slightly more adverse. And I think that these challenges are something that could be addressed with a coordinated and strategic PR campaign. And I think these, these two challenges that our town centre face are visibility and, and identity. Um, we have more on offer now in, in Shepton Mallett's town centre than I, I think we have over the last few years. We have the Art Bank, we have the Cheeky Bean, we have Aurora Cosina, Created Eight. We have the Shepton Mallett Sunday Market, we have the Amazing Prison down the road. Um, but talking to businesses and, and looking at the High Street where I work on, on a day-to-day basis and where I've been based for the last, uh, year and a half. There, there's a chronic absence of footfall. There's a real problem getting people into the town centre. Um, and it's having, it's having, it's having an impact on businesses, which I think is passing into the realm of of, of, of a real problem, the real risk of businesses closing, uh, relocating, um, or compromising in ways that they, that they shouldn't. Uh, we know that the cobblers on the high streets are looking to close. We know that the Art Bank require emergency funding. The Cheeky Bean have just raised their prices to deal with, uh, well, likely an increase in supply costs. Uh, and the Little Farm Shed are also considering their options. Um, which is, uh, which is, which is quite a scary thing, given that they've only been on the High Street for about six months. Um, I've had a look at their accounts to see, to get an idea of where they're at and it's very clear to me looking at the, the trajectory of sales, that things are not good. Uh, there's been a month-on-month decline in their sales. And so they are now having to consider some rather untantalising prospects. But it's not just the Little Farm Shed, it's not just these businesses, it's everyone from Anna's Attic down to Lethal Postman, there is a chronic absence of footfall. So, you know, what do we do about that? Um, Shepton, one of Shepton Mallett's challenges is that unlike towns like Glastonbury that you drive through and you see what's on offer. Uh, the town centre here is a, it's an oasis. You, you drive around it, not through it. You don't see what's here. And now I think we have a plethora of businesses which we really can promote and I think we should do that before it's too late. Um, there's an interesting example, uh, there, there are multiple interesting examples of towns around the UK that have conducted concerted strategic PR campaigns that have succeeded. One of them is a small town in Cumbria called, um, Kirkby Lonsdale. It's a small market town. Um, in twenty twenty-four, they were awarded twenty-four, uh, twenty-five thousand pounds by the government's, um, uh, share, shared prosperity fund. Um, and the way that they've utilised those funds has had a, uh, is, is having a real economic impact. Uh, interesting, interestingly, what their, what their strategy is, is to invest in an eight, an eighty-month PR campaign uh, with nine months strategic focus on promoting the town through a variety of, of efforts such as promoting local businesses and, um, creating, uh, quite a lot of fresh content in the form of videos, video promotions of their town, of their scenery, of their businesses, of their history, uh, and photography as well. And I think that's something that would work really well in Shepton Mallett. Uh, we need to have an, I, we, I don't think we have a, a much of an identity. I don't think when people think of Shepton Mallett, they think of a particular identity, but we've got some real concepts to tap into, especially in regards to our heritage and our, and our history. And the fact that we have all of these amazing businesses, um, that coordinated, that coordinated visibility could really benefit. So the, the proposal is that we, or the town council ring-fence fifty thousand pounds. And this fifty thousand pounds would be used. And this £50,000 would be used to bring in a, to procure a local small to medium sized PR company that can get to grips, get an understanding of what the situation is in the town and create us a PR strategy that delivers over the longer term. And I think that the approach that we should look towards is that we start by filtering out perspective. We advertise for the PR companies, we filter out the ones which we don't want. And then we invite around three to pitch their ideas. And we pay them £1,500 apiece to take the burden off smaller PR companies that might not otherwise have the resources to be able to invest a lot of time in considering this proposal. And that this is delegated to town development and planning with the brief for the PR company delegated to the Economic Working Regeneration Group.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Are you, are you okay to hang on? Because as there are questions that, I mean, in the same way that Abby did, there may be things that you can answer that Tom, for example, might not, or is that okay? So are people kind of, Janet?
Thanks so much for your introduction, Dan, and just letting us know a little bit more of the background and just fleshing out the document that Tom very kindly sent through. And I know that that was a last minute one. So thank you very much for putting that together. I'm sure I'll have more questions as people will ask other questions and you'll respond to answers. But just as you were talking, I was just writing down some thoughts to myself actually about this PR campaign. Can I just assume therefore that Hello Shepton doesn't work? And it is, because I'm thinking, I have gone on to Kirkby Lonsdale's website. It's kirkbylongsdale.co.uk. It's not even a town council website. It's a dot co.uk website and they've got what's on, visiting business finders, chambers of trade, town council. And it's all in this one website, whereas we have town council and Hello Shepton. So I'm just interested in your view of, is Hello Shepton not working? I'm assuming it's not.
I don't, I can't answer that. My feeling is that Hello Shepton should be integrated within the Shepton Mallett Town Council website. Or that another website is created that integrates the services of the council with Hello Shepton. That would be my inclination, but I think, I think Hello Shepton could benefit itself from a PR company's intervention in that they probably have, would have ideas to enhance it and promote it in ways that we possibly haven't thought of.
Okay. Thank you. Any?
I think we would all agree that we definitely need to do something and we need to do something quite fast. I'm just concerned about the sort of potential costs of PR companies for something that's ultimately quite sort of ethereal, that's gone in a moment. You know, £50,000 is a huge amount of money to find. But I think if we're going to do something, we need to be bold. And for me, that is about changing the traffic direction around Shepton. At the moment, we have hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of people a day coming in via the Senatarth roundabouts and all of them are looking left.
Yeah.
And we need to funnel some of that, some of that traffic through the town. And I've, my feeling has always been, and it's something that's in the neighbourhood plan. It was something that was in a very lackluster presentation for levelling up funding last time. But I think it's absolutely imperative if we funnel traffic through the town, past all the businesses. Yes, we don't have much parking, but ultimately you've seen those businesses by that stage and you've got a car parked neatly to the, at the bottom. At the moment, I don't know how you would physically drag people from that town's end estate into the town without doing something dramatic. It's, this isn't about raised beds. It's not about making the town look pretty. It's not about putting our lovely bunting and signs up. We really need to be extremely bold and we really need to shake things up.
I completely, sorry, can I speak? Can I speak now? I completely agree. The traffic needs to be coming down the high street and through Great Austrie and not the other way around. But I think that, you know, that is a proposal that's going to take years to pass through planning and all the associated works. We need something much, much more immediate. And this is where I think the PR campaign can work. But I absolutely agree with you. I mean, I think that not only do we need the redirection of traffic down the high street and through Great Austrie, but we also need, we also need to find ways of signposting the town in a lot more effective way than, than we're doing at the moment. We have, you know, one sign, I know we have three signs that point up Great Austrie towards the town centre. One of them's behind a tree. But there's nothing that excites you. You've got the wonderful bollards, you know, that you see on the street, which say, which list things that you can see in the town, but nothing you can see from a motor vehicle. And we have an enormous through fare of traffic. The way I see our audiences, I see our audiences in three, in three parts. We've got our residential community of around 11,000 residents. A lot of whom don't bother coming to the town centre anymore because they don't feel that there's anything here for them. We need to remind them that there are businesses here that have an offer for. We have £120,000, 120,000 people within a 10 mile radius of the town. Kirkby Lonsdale, glad I got the name right on the second occasion. They, they campaigned for visitors to their town within a two to three hour drive away. We should be doing the same thing. And then we've got this enormous through fare of traffic. About 10,000 people a day visit Tesco's. There's nothing that shows them that they can stop for a coffee at the Cheeky Bean, they can drive in, they can visit the prison. All these things on offer and there's very, very little wayfinding. There's very, very little signage that attracts people and draws people into the town. So I completely agree. But I think a, you know, those kinds of interventions, looking at turning the traffic around, that's a long term. That's five years down the road.
Jane.
Dan, a question. Do you think a PR campaign will actually do much to save the businesses that we're aware of having a problem? Because if we're thinking about doing something right now that's an emergency, is this the right tree to be barking up? And I think we have a massive strategy that we need to get together for, for the centre of town that we did not ever get to grips with. We've got an economic regeneration strategy, which is really about small things that we can do. It's not ambitious enough. We didn't look at tourism linked into it. Look at what's happening with the, with the prison. We need far more to pull all that together, a strategy that does that, which is longer term. It involves the physical structure of how we do that. So what I'm saying is, and also looking at what the kind of mix is, if you're planning a town centre. Maybe the businesses that are there won't survive because they're not what people want, you know. So there's that as well. So for me, there's several things here. There's one, will this do it? And I'm not sure about that at the moment. And two, I think we've got to be much bolder about, I think we, it fell between all stools in terms of our strategic planning for the next few years. And I have very, very great concerns about that in terms of the town council. We haven't looked at that. We haven't put it into our plan. So it doesn't fit anywhere now. So that's a real issue for me.
I mean, I, I think the, I absolutely hear your points. I think this is not a solution. I think this is something that can ease the burden of businesses over a period of time. And I think we need to be realistic about what kind of effects a PR campaign can have. And I think a realistic target is a 20% increase in footfall. And I think a 20% increase of footfall in town, in the town centre on our high streets will make a big difference. And I think the difference that it will make is that it'll incentivise businesses to stay. But also it has the potential, the PR campaign of attracting new businesses, new entrepreneurs. And that's something that we really want because otherwise our town is going to be filled up with Turkish barbers and vape shops and nobody wants that. No one. And so it's, I think as an intervention, I think, I think it will work. To what extent, I'm not sure. But I think if we set realistic targets and aim for a 20% upkeep in footfall, I think that's achievable. I'm not a PR expert, by the way, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking my language. I absolutely back what you're saying. Obviously, it's a large amount of money. But it's the kind of thing that town councils should do because it benefits the businesses, 120 when they're all full. 100 at the moment, although there are some sleeping. I think we do have unique issues with visibility and image that a campaign, concerted campaign with, you know, a well chosen PR company could, could tackle. My question, I suppose, is one that we come back to again and again, are the landowners and, and the likes of Pat and Kevin and people like that as to, as to how on board they would be in terms of, you know, matching, not the money, but matching their efforts to, to, you know, to, to raise the game of, of the town. And I wonder whether they've been consulted or what their feelings or what you imagine their feelings might be.
I mean, I think it would certainly be in the interests of landlords like Bridgman and Newson to collaborate to whatever extent is necessary because it means better quality tenants, I think, at the end of the day, and retention of their existing tenants. What their actual role would be in such a campaign, I can't imagine that they would have much of one. Outside, say, allowing for maybe some promotional material attached to their buildings. I'm not entirely sure, but I'm sure it's a conversation that we could have. I mean, you know, whatever their faults, they, they are pragmatic people. And I'm sure they'd be able to see the value in something like that.
Kai, Kai then Tom. And just so people are aware, we've already, just a bit like the other item, we've already at the 20 minutes we've allocated. So we need to try and move to some sort of resolution.
I dare say one thing that would help tremendously is if they even just took care of their properties. So if you want to put a marketing campaign up and you want to say, visit Shepton, and then it looks as shit, excuse my language, as it does at the moment. That is where we need to, no, I mean, I will, I will supply the council with a few photographs that I've taken less than a week ago of some of the stuff that is happening in our high street.
I actually think that a PR company have the the pressure to be able to address these issues in a diplomatic way with the landlords. So if the PR company come back and they say, you know, part of our strategy is going to be liaising with
Paint your windows.
landlords to incentivise them to improve their property, for example.
Yeah.
Then I think that's something that is likely to come about through that kind of.
But that's what I mean. In that way, they could collaborate. That's really the point of it.
Tom, so I'd like to link back on the recommendation we're putting forward this evening to try and move this forward quickly. Rather than it just being a discussion and then we end up with two full council cycles before we can do anything. So what I'm proposing this evening is that, as Dan said, we delegate to town development and planning because they have the authority to make decisions. The Economic Regen Party do not. So the discussions would take place as part of Economic Regen. But then comes back to TDMP and we meet every three weeks. So we can do stuff relatively speedy. But with a budget of 5K to fund consultancy activities or potentially sponsoring ideas effectively from, from marketing providers locally or in Kirkby Lonsdale, if we find that they're superstars. The truth is, we don't have any detailed information at this stage and we need to go out there, get some expert opinion and be prepared to pay something during that data collection exercise. So.
So can you just clarify the financial bit? So we've got, we're talking about at the end, at the end of the day, a 50K marketing, but then we're also talking about another 15, or three lots of 1500.
Today, the recommendation is to allocate five grand in order to do some homework. Because there's no way we can come and ask for 50K without a concrete proposal and a strategy and and a methodology for assessing impact. We don't have that today. No way we can do 50 grand on the back of that. Don't even know if 50 grand is appropriate. It could be 20, could be 2 million quid, as Gavin was, was applying for, was mentioning. If actually we do need to flip it. So that, the number has been not completely plucked out of the air by Dan, but we don't have any numbers to support that yet.
Got you. Thanks, Tom, for clarifying. That's really helpful. Okay. Matt?
I understand and agree with everything you say, Dan, but I still don't know what, there's no silver bullet, is there? We don't know what that silver bullet is. It fills up with sort of grappling with jelly a bit, or at least I am in my mind, because we know there's a problem. You walk up the high street, it's really quiet at times. And, but I know that other towns have been successful. So there's learning out there. It's about tapping into it. And basically nick, beg, beg, borrow, steal other people's great ideas. You know, the best people in the world do that. My concern is that we have a professional full time, well, full time, but marketing and communications officer. So maybe it's not throwing money at consultants who we ship in from Bristol or wherever to tell us how we should do things. Maybe it's using our existing resource. We have an Economic Regeneration Working Group. We've got a Town Development and Planning Committee. We've got all these conversations already going on and we have a marketing communications officer. We have Hello Shepton. And I raised this at the committee last time to say, there are huge gaps. When are the gaps being filled, you know, in Hello Shepton? Maybe it's about you, using, utilizing our current resource differently, rather than just throwing money at other people to come in. Or maybe we just need, it's eight, I'm a firm believer in the 80 20 rule, yeah. You invest a little bit to get a lot back. Maybe it's investing, giving our marketing communications officer, for example, paying her to do some overtime to an extra X amount of time per week to, to, to work with a PR agency or something, you know. I'm just thinking, I don't want to just completely throw the, throw the concept to a third party when we've got, we should have resource within the council already.
Right. Claire just wants to respond to that specifically. Then there was, and then it, just to be clear, then John and then Jane and Gavin, did you have your, and Gavin. And I think after Gavin's spoken, I think we're going to probably need to move this on because we've got a lot of business still to get through. Claire.
So I spoke with our marketing officer about this members' motion as we were working up papers to send out. She would very much like to be involved in a conversation. She fully acknowledges she's not a retail PR expert. And if this develops into the proposal that's being put forward at this point, she would love to work with that person. But in the meantime, she has some very clear ideas on some things that we can do with pretty immediate effect. And would like to be involved in that conversation with the Economic Regen Working Party or whoever it is that's having that conversation.
Can I say something quickly?
Right, sorry.
This is burning platform. We have an Economic Regen meeting tomorrow. Is she able to attend? Because.
I can ask.
Well, yeah, please ask, because these conversations are going on all the time and she's quite absent. And that's no disrespect to her. She has her working hours and things like that, but maybe we need to flex our time, but.
Well, the office on the table, so that's the critical thing. So that's the good thing. Dan, did you, did you want to respond to?
I, it's not enough to have a, I understand, you know, your marketing officer in the council and an Economic Regeneration group on site, it's not enough. We need a PR campaign that knows what they're doing, that has the resources to be able to assess what's happening in the town, create all the, the metric framework that we'll need to assess the outputs and the success of the, and the ongoing impact of, of this thing. We really need, this needs to be an in-house project by a dedicated PR company. That's my feeling.
Noted. I understand that. So hold on a minute. John.
I'll try my brief. I try. I think Gavin touched on it and I suppose there are significant more wider societal problems, which a marketing or PR company are not going to be able to. They are just, they're not, whether it's roads, what people have got in their pocket. I work Monday to Friday. I, I might go into town to go to the library on a Saturday. I, I work Monday to Friday. I, I, I might go into town to go to the library on a Saturday. If I go into the light town, like, they're going to town on a Sunday, what shops are open? What shops are open? Barbers, which with the greatest respect, you seem to dismiss, okay? They're, they're operating now, whether, whether they are, they're operating, shall I say.
What day?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Yeah. So if, if, if I can't get into the town for a Friday, for the Friday market, which is, which is, which is buzzing, I, I'm not convinced I would get the full plethora of services in the town on Sunday. Might not be available, so I go to Tesco. So will Tesco be part of this? Will the football club be part of this?
Uh, no, the Tesco's won't be part of it. I mean, this is not about addressing societal problems.
No, 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 it's not. But, but in terms of the, the, the wider aspect of drawing people to the town, for example, the football club. You mentioned the prison. Prison's amazing. Of course it is. The football club could bring people to the town. You know, there, there are other businesses just other than the, the certain town on High Street, so. And, and I, having tried to market historic attractions and other things, five thousand pounds is not going to go anywhere.
The, the five thousand pounds is for the initial.
Yeah, I know, no, no, but there are people that aren't going to get out of bed for fifteen hundred quid.
There are small regional players who I think who would.
But do those small regional players have the impacts which we're looking for to go wider? Visit Somerset are on the knees, okay? We're not even, we're not listed on Visit Somerset, okay? Visit Somerset used to be a major player in bringing people to Somerset, a brief of Somerset. We're not listed on there, okay? So that's probably fifteen hundred quid just for membership for that, okay? I'm just this feels and a matter said, we've got a resource there. We, we must tap into that resource. Because I don't, I, you know, if you, if, if three P R companies are getting paid fifteen hundred quid or whatever the figure is, and they come back with an amazing thing and then they say, right, well, to put that into action is a hundred thousand pounds, then what do we do? Because we can't use their idea, because that's their idea. And then, then.
Well, I, I think, I think this is something that we would explore more with the economic regeneration group as we develop.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just going to kind of say, I don't think of some of these.
No, 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 but I think we, we just, we just.
But I can't solve them, so.
No, 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 but we just had a discussion about, about the art bank, you know, and we, we, we promote that performance. So where, so that's the art bank. If, if we're going to spend, as, as Tom has outlined, say fifty thousand pounds, it could be more, it could be less. Who, who, who gets, who gets a say in that pot? Tesco? Buo Jim?
I'd like to say nothing is off the table yet. If economic um regen decide that it's a Tesco sponsored tiddlywink tournament every Saturday in the market town in the centre, you know, spot on.
Yeah.
You know, nothing's off the table.
Got the feeling that we were, there was a, a little bit of disrespect towards other elements, other business providers in the town, of which Tesco provide an awful lot of jobs. I'm looking at one of our councillor colleagues.
That's a point made by Matt on previous occasions, that they hold an awful lot of clout. And if we can invite them to be part of this, all the better.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, right, so Martin and then Gavin will be the last speaker. Jane, go, go, no, go on, Jane.
My point was, um, we need to do something quick and dirty. Um, that might mean that we have a communications officer who could provide some of that quick and dirty stuff because we haven't got long, have we? Um, we then need to look at something far more substantial. We need to look at how we uh view the future direction of this high street. Somerset won't go at Forest because I've looked at Somerset's economic regeneration growth um uh thing and it does have nothing for Shepton, absolutely nothing. So we've got to make our own way. And I think it means a lot more money being spent strategically rather than quick one-off. If we can get some stuff done with they, that would be absolutely brilliant, that we'll start raising the profile right now, today. And I think we then need to discuss it. We have this meeting tomorrow night. We will come back with some kind of plan that we can share with people, an outline plan.
Okay, so, uh, Martin?
Uh, I'm going to do the decorations on the Christmas tree element. Um, to, to explain what I mean is looking at previous initiatives, which have been ignored in the past and, as I say, stuck on the Christmas tree. May I ask, for example, do we have a Donaldson's report in the office thirty years ago? Do we have a Parsons Brinckerhoff report in the office twenty years ago? All of which, both of which were doing exactly what we're talking about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
That, that sounds excellent. I had no idea we had, we were sat on two, two reports, perhaps a little old. Martin, I mean, are there, are there resources like that that need to be presented to the Economic Regen Group tomorrow?
They may not be there. I'm just saying these are previous initiatives that were there. It's possible there are copies of their reports in the office, but I, I wouldn't necessarily say, don't, don't rantack the office in time for tomorrow evening, but it's just, in terms of the melting pot, we might just wish to throw this in. If they're there, they may not be there.
Oh, you're our final speaker.
I think we all agree that there is no silver bullet, but, but ultimately, if a silver bullet can be found, I think specialist P R groups are the people that are going to find it. And basically, we're being asked for five thousand pounds tonight. Please state everybody's concerns, but we have a failing town. We have, we have reserves. We might be able to draw funding from other, other groups. If we've got some meaningful um evidence in place from, from marketing companies or within, we can perhaps take it to the next level. But tonight, we're being asked for five thousand pounds, which I think would be an absolute travesty if we walk away from that request this evening.
Oh, very great. I have to say, I'm actually more comfortable with something like this than I was bailing out the art bank because this is part of that big, big blue sky thinking, where we're trying to really resolve. There is a massive problem in Shepton Mallow. There are so many businesses that have come and gone, come and gone, come. We've got to do something. We've got to do something. So I'm actually way more, I'm quite reserved with spending our cash. Um, but I am very comfortable with this sort of an idea. Just sort of put that out there.
Thank you, Bobby. Thomas, the report author, do you want to move to the?
So just to summarize on a couple of other, a couple of points, we're looking for qualitative ideas with this initial proposal. It's not about delivering, but we need to make it clear that the resource that we're coming back to the council to ask for is not purely financial. It's, it's looking for that contribution from the marketing officer. That's part of our resource. Volunteering efforts, business contributions from the town. So whatever this, this strategy might, might present, some of it will be financial. And then it's just looking broadly at what we can dig into, what resources can we tap into as, as a town? So moving on, should I read out the recommendation again? Yep, cool. So, recommendation for this evening, delegate authority to T M, T D M P to develop a plan for town to promotion with the aim of generating a sustainable, long-term increase in footfall for local businesses. The plan shall include a fully costed strategy, expected outcomes and a method for assessing impact. This initial project may include, may include commissioning early-stage input from an external marketing agency or similar consultants with a budget of up to five K. T D M P to report back to full council with a detailed proposal and make the case for additional funding if required. That's what's on the table for this eve. Can I have a second?
Yeah, did you, did you want something specifically in relation to the proposal?
On that recommendation, taking into account what they had said about, she's not a retail P R expert. I would just suggest in your proposal, you add in from an external retail marketing agency, because there's, there's quite a specific difference between somebody who's retail marketing and marketing. So that was just the extra addendum, I'd say, put in.
Does, does it, hmm, I don't want to limit this. Uh, I don't want to tie anyone's hands in the economic region. If they found a placemaking consultant that has the right credentials and some really great ideas, um, I feel it should be as open as possible in that regard.
We've got the recommendation. Um, sorry, and Gavin's about to second it. Tom's proposed, Gavin, you're proposing clearly, you're seconding, so I'm going to move to a vote. So those, sorry.
Before you move to the vote, can you identify the source of the funds, please?
Oh.
Some options, please, Claire.
Um. Without knowing at this stage of the financial year where your likely underspends are going to be, I think it's going to have to be general reserves. But yeah, you know, I don't like spending a single penny from there, so this is making me really twitchy this evening and I'm going to need counselling afterwards.
Is, is there anything within T D M P itself?
Yeah, there you go. Uh, just a second, let me see if I can see it on the.
I mean, you didn't spend any money and you have a budget.
I believe we have like a, a, a nibbles and drinks fund for E R G, which I don't, we, we haven't got that. Okay.
It's a bit of a sting, sort of link really.
To funds this way, so. I think there's probably not very much, well, four, five, there might be five. I know, it's what it's going to be taking from.
The, the financial reports only include a summary report, so the entire summary uh funds available within T D M P stands at eleven thousand one hundred. My memory is that a, about fifty percent of that is to do with highways data. Um, okay.
So could take from there, yes. So we're identifying that budget.
Can we go over budget then? Because if we got the highways data stuff to go, we've got some of that still to come out as well as the five K that's, well, that's come out of the eleven K. So we've, we've, we, we will overspend, I suspect. Okay.
So what you could do as a full council this evening, if you didn't want to commit the whole amount to general, from general reserves, you could agree to delegate it to T D M P to spend from their budget lines and leave it to them to determine which. And you, if you are wanting the T D M P committee to be able to overspend, then you can obviously caveat that resolution this evening to overspend up to the value of five thousand pounds to enable T D B to deliver its requirements for the year.
I'm happy with that.
So, uh, sorry, just, just two things, just to reiterate that the recommendation doesn't specifically say retail.
Uh, if it's, unless it's going to be a blocker for members here, I would propose no.
Okay, great. And if this is an emergency, why isn't it not coming from general reserves?
The, the second tranche may well have to, but today, this is a matter managed by T D M P and we have this, that order of magnitude lurking in the budget there.
Yeah, okay.
We've had the proposal, we've had seconded, all those in favour, please show. There's nobody against.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, unanimous. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dan. You're free to, you're free to go. You're free to go and buy rounds, bring it back. Okay, yeah.
Uh, back to the officer report.
So now, yes, so back to uh the agenda. Yeah, and it.
Page number seven, folks.
This is indeed the officer.
So I wasn't, as this isn't a decision item, I wasn't going to propose to talk through it. You've got a full update, slightly updated in presentation on where we are on all of the actions from the preceding meetings. You've got a financial report and then it's just whether or not there are any chairs reports, um, working group and representative reports and anything to comment on the Somerset Council reports.
I didn't see a Somerset Council report, sorry.
No, I mean, it's not going to support.
I think that was my error because I'm sure Martin sent me an email. I'm so sorry, Martin. Can I circulate it to you after the event and I will attach it to the agenda page for this meeting so that it has public visibility as well? I do apologize.
So, I mean, there's a lot of guff in the report, but the things that will interest you, um, the, the people who are terribly um, uh worried about Fix My Street, I have given a fairly comprehensive position and report about the decision made about Fix My Street. It actually came back, actually, Fix My Street is clearly quite useful for, for, you know, people who use it. What it isn't useful is the people who have to use the information from it. Um, it simply is, it is clunky, it um is terribly difficult to use the stuff from Fix My Street and, and put it into a, something that the town, there's a, there's a highway authority can use. So that is the main reason behind it. Um, yes, it may seem inconvenient, but that, but the, the intention is to make things rather more efficient. But if you read my report, then please come back to me. Um, the other thing I ought to refer to is the um, uh, local government boundary commission. Um, uh, there's now a consultation out, and I'm telling you this now because it finishes on the eleventh of August and our next meeting is not till the second of September. Um, basically, what's being proposed by the boundaries commission is that Shepton, contrary to what I've ever said before, uh, Shepton is in two halves, uh, Shepton East Ward and Shepton West Ward plus Pilton. So, uh. Roscombe is now out. Roscombe is now part of something called Mendip Hills, uh, which includes Horringtons and Wookiee Hall and all sorts. Yes, it's, it's gone back, backwards and forwards. Um, but you, if, anyway, it's there. If you read the report, um, I've, I've put a link through to where you can actually comment uh directly to the boundary commission. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. Matt?
My question, Martin, does your report refer about the um change of Somerset Council taking over the ID Verdi responsibilities? Because I haven't seen any sort of briefing on that.
Uh, no, it, it doesn't. Uh, but yes, that is happening. Uh.
First of June, I've read.
Um, I'm sure there's means of finding out. I'll see if I've.
But there's a press release on the Somerset Council website. Can I suggest we include it in the weekly bulletin this week? That's okay.
So they're taking it in-house.
From the first of June, they have taken. ID Verdi, as far as I understand, doesn't exist in Somerset now. It's, they're, they're all Somerset Council employees.
As it is, there's no, I mean, yeah, if you've got any questions about it, I'm happy to take them up, but.
Okay, um, so we've covered all yours. Yeah, there's nothing, nothing in addition really for me. Sorry. I forgot any special.
All right, I don't mind. And I, I, I just wanted to, obviously, n- not you per se, Martin, about not using Fix My Street app. It's an app that people have on their phones. They can take a photograph or instantly do it. On, on, if I've got my memories correct, on the Somerset Council thing, when you report in a pothole, it asks you to measure it. I, I'm, I'm not sure I had, carry a ruler around with me to measure a pothole that I've just smashed my tyre into. I, I don't, I, I, and, and also I don't get the bit about doesn't matter whether it's one report or two hundred reports, it's not going to move the priority of a pothole up the chain of command. I, I don't get it. I just, what, make, make things user-friendly.
I don't suppose Fix My Street would put it up the priority list either. Um, well, like you, like anybody else, I simply guess the size of the pothole. I've done it often enough. I agree, it's not ideal, but it's, that's, as, there it is. And the more information they have about what, what they're up against, then the, the, the better, in a better position.
But when that information is supplied, I'm taking, for example, the Pilton pothole. Eh? It's not, it's not a safety defect and the police have put a sign up there and, and a councillor is involved. I, I, I find that, I find that ridiculous. I, I find it utterly ridiculous that, I, I, right, the information, the, the council should be absorbing information, not just through its official channels.
So, so just, I'm going to give it, but just for my own clarity, so, so are they getting rid of Fix My Street and replacing it with something else?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we need, maybe we need to see what. Yeah, because there's no point getting ariated about something that's going to disappear. I think it would be more fun.
No, it's, 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 Fix My Street has gone. It was a couple of months ago. Yeah. It's not, though.
Well, back to what I said before, I, yeah, Fix My Street may be quite useful for the people reporting something. It's of no use whatsoever for a highway authority.
But how, how come so many other councils use it? Somerset is one of the very few councils that stopped using Fix My. Somerset is one of the very few councils that stopped using Fix My Street.
Because Somerset's getting its act together to do something about highways, I can't comment on the other authorities.
And just if practical, is there a link to the new on our website, just so we? Yeah, I think that would be good, just so we can direct and Martin can direct traffic.
Gavin, and then we're going to stop there, because we really must.
I have actually been involved in in this doing and throwing, and I've seen the things, the stuff that Martin is talking about as initially quite what seems rather disappointing. If it's going to work, it does seem to make a lot more sense. So I think we need to 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 trust in the decision that's been made and hope that there's a dramatic improvement. So so I think wait till we've all read that report, because it does make a lot more sense once you've done it.
Okay, right, I'm good, I'm getting. Move us, move us.
But this is really pertinent, did you ever get a response from the Letty rate Somerset Council about?
No, so so I'm going to be looking at making a formal complaint.
Okay, thank you.
And I've checked about who are who our area manager is, and although they've gone through a major restructuring, that hasn't changed. But given that that's the person who was written to in the first place, so I'll have to go through the formal complaint procedure. Yeah. Thank you very much. Item two point six, financial risk assessment. I'm clocked.
Okay, as per the papers, I've done a mid-year assessment, so there's only a couple of things that we changed which I have highlighted in the report for you. Just trying to find it now, yeah, yes, the the change, it's one point six point three shows the changes, so the conflict of interest risk level has been reduced because we had the training delivered a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago. A new risk has been added, spending outside of agreed budget, that was with the foresight of knowing what was coming up on this agenda. I realised that we hadn't actually got that highlighted as a risk, let alone we're measuring it, so I have added that in. At that point, I impact, the impact was two and the likelihood was two, whether you want to change the likelihood in light of having made decisions on those items, I that's entirely up to you. And then the final one was bank signatory access. I think that everyone who was newly added after the annual meeting is now active and it's working. If it's not, you need to let us know, but basically you should all have access if you were one of those people. I don't really have any more comments on it.
Thank you. Any questions? Rob?
I propose we accept it and move on.
Anybody like second? Matt, all those in favour, please show. That was, yeah, unanimous, that's brilliant, thank you everybody. Payments, two point seven. We've we saw these in, we saw these in P and R, didn't we? Yeah.
No, P and R, you would have received the May payments and now you're receiving the June payments. And just to let you know that the bank balance after these payments were made was, is eight hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight pounds and thirty-three pence.
Janet.
Having been a new person on the banking and having seen these and gone through these with a fine tooth comb, I'd like to propose the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Janet, seconded by James, no, you've got a question.
I was very excited to encounter the S C H pressure washer, close, up close and personal. My question is for nine thousand, upwards of nine thousand. What's it going to be used for, can you confirm?
It's not a pressure washer, this was one of the things I queried when I was doing the reviews, I said, blimey, that's a really expensive pressure washer. That's actually the cost for the water bowser thingy. It's just it was put down on the payment schedule as a pressure washer, because I said, oh, I'm not approving that. So that that is the water bowser, it was just the wrong line. And there was also a query that had come up, it was an old E D F bill that said Christmas electricity, which has now, but it wasn't Christmas electricity, it was to do with the toilets, which I think we just discussed at P and R. And that has has also been approved, it was the wrong narrative on the payments line, if anybody else is pulling up that one. So is there any other questions? Because I queried quite a lot of queries with Kerry, did you?
Excellent, thank you. So so the bowser is for watering plants. Is that right? And so we don't have a pressure, high-pressure system at the moment for, I think you know where I'm going.
I think we already do, but I don't think it's a a big industrial machine, I think it's a small convenient machine.
Kai?
Sorry, added question to this, the bowser has obviously got quite a a complex system, it's got, I was told it has a couple of pumps on it. Is the bowser usable with a mobile pressure washer as well? Because my question that came up when we did the pressure washing in the marketplace is, interestingly, they only cleaned the surface, they didn't clean a single one of the drain lines that goes along there, they are. I took some photographs of them again today and videos, they are two-thirds to three-quarters blocked and they could easily be cleaned with a pressure washer, but it needs a different, it doesn't need a circular brush that cleans the surface and stripes like they did and cost four thousand pounds, but it needs handheld jets that clean the and we could do this, we could do this as volunteers as well, but what I do need to know in that context is does the bowser have the facilities, firstly, does it have a pump, secondly, is there a possibility either with a mobile generator or with cables from our electricity supply to undertake this kind of work ourselves?
So the the short answer to your question is, I don't know a hundred percent. It wasn't specified as a requirement when we ordered the machine. So, that said, I don't know why, I don't see a problem with it being able to do that. But our team has actually been speaking and trying to understand the the full range of what that piece of equipment can do. And in fact, we've got one of them doing overtime tomorrow or coming in on his day off tomorrow to work with the other ranger so that the two of them can work together, because normally they alternate, but I will ask that specific question. The other, sorry, the other thing I just want to say is with drains and gullies, just need to be careful that whatever we do doesn't cause blockage down the gullies further down, because we pushed things in further down, not downstream, down gully. But just just so you're aware, that that is a consideration for me.
Yeah, no, I'm fully aware of that, I mean, part of that would have to be not just washing it, but then also cleaning the gullies, because that's a further observation of mine, they are obviously locked, fair enough, and they had to have to be locked. But we need to, in the context of this, also find out whether, when and how we can unlock them to clean them, because many of them are also full of debris.
I was just going to say that we're taking the scope of this approving payments quite beyond what what we need it to do. And gullies is Somerset Council responsibility, so I don't want to enter that conversation until I've done some research.
Thank you, okay.
Can I just go back to the point that I've confirmed that I would recommend we accept the reasons for recommendation?
Janet, Rob's seconding, all those in favour, please show. Any against? I know, we're all good, that's marvellous. Which brings us on to the local council award scheme. Claire, this is your answer, I believe.
Okay, we we have ten minutes left, so I'm conscious of time. This was something that councils resolved to do, we've already paid for the registration fee and this is just bringing everything up to order. I was hoping when this was scheduled for this meeting that we would be there, but there are a couple of things that will still need to go to the Policy and Resources Committee on the second of August. So but it needs to be a full council resolution, which is why it's here, so you can either resolve tonight, subject to P and R being satisfied that it's met the final few bits and pieces. You can take it to the September meeting, but be aware that's on the second of September and the deadline for submission is the sixth of September. So that's quite a tight turnaround if that meeting then says, can you do X, Y, Z as well?
Just thinking about the timings here, and it's, to me, it just seems very straightforward. I think we should go with the recommendation and I think we should, as Chair of P and R, I think we should go before P and R so that the timings are not too hectic. So unless there's loads of other questions, I think we should just move straight to the recommendation.
Right, I've got Janet, I've got Jane and I've got you.
It was very quickly, just to support that with Gavin, having shared the recent P and R in Gavin's absence, we actually did fly through a lot of the terms of references which are in support of submission for this. So I know the process, I'm happy with the process we're going to go through, so I think we absolutely can do this in P and R, so I would support the recommendation too.
Thank you, Shane.
This is a tiny detail, and therefore throw me out if you want to, but councillor profiles, before first of July, there should have been a link on who we are or I've I've lost it because there's a note over my, but but my question was, what profiles have we got and can we all look at them? Because they're probably way out of date and I really don't think that's appropriate if we're going to go for a gold standard award of some sort.
So the the short answer is, I I believed it had been done last week, but I will double check and maybe there's just a publish button that's missing. The who, on the contact us or the who we are for councillors, there should be a link to each councillor's profile and that was something that I did with you all about eighteen months ago. Certainly, it's within recent memory because it was, Janet's is on there as well, so it's been in that period of time. If you don't mind me using you as the newest joining councillor.
Matt?
Firstly, thank you, Tom, well done to Claire for pulling all us together, because it's a good sort of patting your back and it's recognition that, you know, we've got a really professional team of officers, so so well done. Second point I want to make, and this is where I sound a bit patronising, but we discussed this in P and R, is this is good, we could do some good PR with this once we get the award. But it could go horribly wrong, because there's nothing worse, I don't think, for a lot of people, seeing councils pat themselves on the back. But it could be a really good opportunity to show people that actually, for all the, what was the word you used earlier? The shit that goes on in national government and other forms of government, the local government of Shepton is as transparent as we can possibly be. We think offers as best value of money as can be and it's every penny spent is spent in Shepton. So it could be a really positive piece of PR, but the PR has got to be done right with this.
Thank you, Matt. Oh.
So I have, just looking now, I can see that there are a couple that are missing, I know one councillor refused to do one. But that's, you know, that's each of your prerogative to to do or not do. There are some missing that I know exist, so I will find out from our comms officer why there may be a reason for that, it might be that they're in the process of being tidied or rewritten.
I'm not Chair of H R.
No. That's fine, we will, we will.
Yeah, I'll have a look at it myself anyway, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we're happy to move, yeah, to to the to the recommendation, which has been proposed by Janet. Second.
Gavin, Janet.
Proposed by Gavin, seconded by Janet, all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous, thank you very much indeed. So then we scooped through to two point eleven, terms of reference, which this should, this should be straightforward, he said. Page twenty-three of twenty-five.
Okay, so it it's simply what you as committees have recommended to put forward. Note, ACT and TDMP still need to review theirs, so their amendments will come forward to the September full council. But the bullet points are there, so Ray, adding in the word minimum to the six members, correcting the spelling of responsibility, although when I looked through, I couldn't find it being misspelled, so I might need somebody with better eyes than me. And then replace working groups with project boards, which I know there was an email back with a comment about why. So perhaps that's the conversation to have this evening before we update it. And then H R, we have updated the equalities-related policy responsibility and we have removed a specified number for appeals, having recently gone through a process that demonstrated that flexibility and reactiveness to a situation is more important.
Thank you, so there's obviously one pending. So the recommendation, adopt the terms of reference for R A E and H R.
So. Do you want to just check that Kai's okay with the wording under Ray, because it was his email that prompted a question?
Are you happy with the Ray changes, because apparently you you did an email about it?
It was just in relation to using the word project boards instead of working groups.
Adopt the revised terms of reference for Ray and H R committee.
Yeah.
I'm happy to propose.
Propose, thank you, Janet, seconded James.
Again, can I ask a question? This is Kai's question, so is there any difference? What what is the difference and what makes a working group a project board? Are they, are there no working groups left now and why are they all project boards?
There are both, so at any point, any committee may create a working group, full council may create a working group. It has no delegated authority and its whole ethos will be determined by the committee that creates it. The project boards are always created specifically to manage the efficiency of delivering a project. So I would say both are valid, but not including in the terms of reference doesn't present, prevent you from being able to create one, because legislation will always allow you to.
Fantastic.
In which case, coming out, so all those in favour?
I had Rob was seconding.
Yeah, yeah. So all in favour? Unanimous.
Marvelous.
And I think.
With one minute to go, Chair.
We've finished, haven't we?
Yeah.
Well done, too, thank you again, good meeting. Interesting decisions, good decisions. Go home and have a cold beer or cold glass of wine, get a tonic.